Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 28, 2017, meeting of the Titusville City Council. We have a quorum. I'll open the meeting, call the meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its standards, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is minutes. We have minutes from the City Council, Special City Council Meeting on November 7, 2017. I will entertain a motion.
I go to approve the minutes of the Special City Council Meeting on November 7, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Lean Six Sigma has become a successful process in eliminating waste within the city government. Over the past year, the city has had 20 employees complete and pass the green belt course and are currently working on projects to obtain their green belt certifications. In total, the city currently has 29 green belts and one black belt. The following individuals have successfully completed their projects and are now certified as Lean Six Sigma green belts. And we'll, I'd like to call the individuals up. And we've got Bonnie here from CAS Adapted Services who will join us to present the green belts to Sandra Reller, who is Public Works. I don't see Mariana, she's not here. Brad Parrish from Community Development, or Lena Lively from the Police Department, Shane Daly from Support Services, and Chief John Hustles from the Fire Department, please come up here. Mayor, if I could have you join us.
I think we're ready.
Lean.
Let's get one more. Sorry.
Why do you not, let me see where my file. There you go. I was still.
That's why I was taking.
Is that where you said the lean? The file is straight.
All right, we're good.
Thank you very much.
And before we go to the next agenda item, on councils, on your computer, we've provided you a list of the current projects as well as the completed projects for your review. And we will send that out to you electronically.
Into city, interactive city maps?
The city's online maps are now interactive, searchable and available in a number of formats. The link GIS Maps is located in the top right corner of the city's website and is now available to the public. The public can search for information about the location of utility lines, zoning, the status of development projects and capital improvements, the location of city and county parks, FEMA flood hazard information, and even the location of local and nationally registered historic sites. The maps help to reduce the call volume to water resources and the planning staff. This project was a collaborative effort between the Geographic Information Systems, GIS staff from the Information Technology, Water Resources, Community Development Departments, and Gordon Broome, Kenny Lor, Mariana Restova, and Kenneth Dobson. And we have Brad Parrish here. We'd like to give a quick demonstration for council as well as the public on this great initiative.
As the City Manager mentioned, this is a collaboration between four different departments. I'm not going to do a demonstration but show you snapshots of what we've come up with. This is about a year in order to come up with this. And I'll just have a few slides to show you what we've done. So if you go to the city's website, the very front page, you'll see a new link in the very top right. I tried to circle it in red but it doesn't show up very well. It's called GIS Maps. And what that means is geographic information systems maps. It just means that we have now maps that are online that are interactive that people can, can open and search and search what they want about a particular property. So if you click on that link, you'll open up this new page. Here we go. And this is what it looks like. We have a series of additional maps that you can choose depending on what you're trying to find out. For example, if you're trying to find out the location of whether there's utilities available, water and sewer lines available near the property you want to develop on or you're trying to connect to or put a house on, you can open up this app and it'll just show what's available there immediately to that property. It doesn't give you a lot of detail but it does give you enough information to get an idea of what's available. And then if you, obviously, if you want the detailed information about the size of that or you have to call the city for that. Another map, just a second there, is Applications Under Review. So basically that, I'll show you a little screenshot of that. Will tell you what kind of rezoning applications, development applications, subdivisions that we have under review, and the status of that project. Previously, we didn't have that available online. And now people can go to it, open it up, find where that property is located or where that project is located. A third one is Capital Improvements. That just tells you what infrastructure improvements we have planned and shows you where they're located. And a fourth one there is Parks and Amenities. I'm going to show you three. There are three more actually, there's seven altogether. There's one even on historic preservation. I'm going to show you just three here. The first one is just an example snapshot of that first app that I described. That shows the location of water and sewer mains, for example. And so you can type in the address of the property that you're looking for. It will zoom to that particular property. And then you could turn on the layers to see for water or turn on a layer for sewer and see, it'll pop up that particular line near that property. That has helped reduce the call volume to staff. This one I just mentioned earlier was the Development Applications that are Under Review. So you'll see, this is just an example here where you click on a particular project. It'll give you a snapshot of what that project might be. In this case, this is a new subdivision that's going in on River Edge Drive. It's currently under construction. And then it'll give you a brief description about it, including any public hearing dates for that particular project. This has also helped us reduce the volume, call volume to our planning staff. This third one is the most important one, it's been the most helpful to us, and that's our new zoning map. Prior to this, we had a map specialist by the name of Jim Stevens. He retired about a couple of years ago. But he spent 30 years with the city creating these very informative maps that were very static and had a lot of information on them, but very helpful, and everybody relied on them. But they're very cumbersome to use. So we decided to use available technology that's available with our license with a company called Esri. And we have now an online map that you can put an address on your property, zooms that property, and you can turn on a variety of different layers, including a zoning layer to find out what the zoning is on that property, including other information such as any special permits that might have been proven that property. So you can immediately find out what's vested on that property. That, right in itself, has really reduced the call volume to our staff. With that, I just want to give, just recognize four people who really helped out with this. And that is Kenny Lor, who's our GIS specialist. He works in the IT department. He's the one that really helped us with the backend and on putting this project together. And then also, Mariana Christova and Kenneth Dobson were our GIS analysts in the Planning Department. And then also Gordon Bound with Water Resources, who's their GIS technician, for him putting all his information together, including the utilities map, and to Sean Stoffer as well for his support. So basically, without that group who worked very hard in the past year, we probably, we wouldn't have this. So this is a really big and important resource to us, and it's really helped us.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Great job. Thanks.
Next item, please.
Yes, sir. For the record, I'd like to read the names of those who have received letters of appreciation this month. From Community Development, Mr. Steve Adams, the Deputy Building Official. From the Police Department, Officer Jason Hanson. From the Public Works Department, the entire stormwater team as well as the tree removal team which recovered from both hurricanes, Matthew and Irma, this budget year. And from Water Resources, Ms. Ashley Smith, the Project Engineer.
Next item, sir, Planning and Zoning Commission? Oops, sorry. No, I guess we are on that one. We did Letters of Appreciation?
Yes, sir.
The Municipal Code Enforcement Board?
Yes, sir. Currently, there are two vacancies for alternate members with terms to expire on 31 October 2020. There's currently one application on file for consideration, Mr. Norm Herman, who has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this commission as an alternate member. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Is Mr. Herman here this evening?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything, sir? You'll have to come up to the microphone if you don't mind.
I am Norm Herman. I live at 3749 Oak Hill Drive. I applied for a position on the, on the board because of my experience on the Architectural Review Board within the La Cita Homeowner Association. And I have an engineering background, and I think I can do well serving on the board.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And thank you for applying. Much pleasure, council. Good, good.
Second.
Have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Congratulations, sir. You're on the board. Next item is Titusville Environmental Commission.
The term of alternate member Todd St. Louis expires on 30 November 2017. Member St. Louis has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another three years with his term expiring on 30 November 2020. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Is Mr. St. Louis here? I do not see him, so we'll go right to council. Much pleasure.
Move to appoint Mr. St. Louis to the commission.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Planning and Zoning Commission.
Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with a term scheduled to expire on 31 January 2018. There are currently one application on file for your consideration. Mr. William Kiltpatrick has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this commission as a regular board member. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Is Mr. Kirkpatrick here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm here anyway. I was on this board, BAA, a couple of years ago. I had a couple of medical issues come up, so that kind of knocked me off for a while. And most of you people are very familiar looking. I've seen you, I'm sure you've seen me, if you remember me. But I've retired. I have plenty of time to devote to the job, and I think I can do a good job for the city.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Much pleasure, council.
Move to appoint Mr. Kirkpatrick to the board.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Congratulations, sir. You're a member of the board.
Thank you, sir.
Next is petitions and requests from the public present. Are there any, anyone who wants to speak on any non-scheduled issue? I see none. Go to the Consent Agenda.
Yes, sir. Mayor, if I could, staff would like to pull Consent Agenda Item 8E for some clarification.
Okay. Have any cards been submitted on any of these items, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Council, do you have any that you would like to be pulled? Anybody on council? I see none. We'll pull Item 8E. They will be heard separately after the consent agenda. Like to have a motion to approve Items 8A, B, C, D, and which is the last one? That's the last one. That's it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in, wait a minute. Any, any further discussion? Oh, reading? Sorry.
Yes, sir. Consent Agenda Item 8A, approved reprogramming of $38,282 in the Titusville Department Personnel Support Funds to the following. One, $22,500 to Human Resources to fund a temporary part-time HR assistant to assist in implementing executive time, payroll, and applicant tracking and processing tasks. And two, $15,782 to the Police Department Overtime Account to help mitigate staffing shortfalls in the Police Dispatch Center. Consent Agenda Item 8B, accept two utility easements from Titusville FD LLC for newly completed Family Dollar Store on Dairy Road. Consent Agenda Item 8C, approve the use of National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number 2018120716NAF for the purchase of one 2018 Ford Interceptor SUV from Allen J. Fleet Sales at $35,992.63 for a total of $35,992.63. Consent Agenda Item 8D, approve the change in the annual expenditure amount for Cigna Medical Supplement and Pharmacy Plan for the city retirees eligible for Medicare for calendar year 2017 from $481,580 to $543,780. The increase is based on an increase in the number of planned eligible participants becoming Medicare-eligible during the calendar year, from a projected number of 99 to the, to a planned number of 110. And Consent Agenda Item 8E, Florida Statute 166 241 states that the governing body of each municipality-
We pulled E, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Oh, you're going to read it?
Yes, sir. Each municipality at the time within the fiscal year, up to 60 days following the end of the fiscal year, may amend the budget for that year as follows. Appropriations for expenditures within the fund may be decreased or increased by motion recorded within the minutes, provided that the total of the appropriation in the funds has not changed. B, the governing body may establish procedures by which the designated budget officer may authorize certain budget amendments within the department, provided that the total appropriation of the department has not changed. C, if the budget amendment is required for the purpose of not specifically authorized in paragraph A or paragraph B, the budget amendments must be adopted in the same manner as the original budget unless otherwise specified in the Charter of the respective municipality. And the attached FY 17 Year End Budget Adjustment Request recognizes the budget actual variances and must be addressed prior to that fiscal year. We have Ms. Clements available to explain that we're going to have to adjust the number even further than what was in your read ahead.
Go right ahead.
The very last item on your spreadsheet, the Partially Self-Injured Fund. This is where we budget all of our medical claims costs. We are requesting a budget amendment to add $3,961,756 in your packet. That is to be covered by reinsurance reimbursements. I'm going to, I'm requesting that we increase that number by $14,841. So the new claims number would be $3,976,597. And that would, that $14,000 will be sourced from excess city contributions attributed to open positions. We're making this adjustment because since the publication of the agenda, we've gotten an actuarial report in, and we just need to make a little bit of an adjustment to claims in order to meet our state requirements. That's the only adjustment.
And that's going on the, which?
It's on the self, the partially self-insured, the one, the biggest number at the bottom.
Okay, I got it. Okay, that's the, all right. Any questions from council? If not, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call-
Currently, your motion is only as to A through D in a second. You didn't vote on A through D yet. If you want to add E to that, you can.
I can? Okay, let's add E to that. Does the motion hold?
Can I add E to it? Would you add E to it?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item is Ordinance's Second Reading. Item A, City Manager.
The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the CPA. The city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations currently require that wetlands greater than five acres in size must be designated as conservation land use and open space recreation OR zoning. In many instances, this has resulted in significant areas of wetlands being protected. However, the limited option for the designation of wetlands has limited use of conservation subdivisions in which wetlands could be protected by conservation easements through the plat limitations. These options would provide an excellent measure of protection flexibility for the property owners seeking to develop conservation subdivisions. Staff's recommendation is that you conduct a public hearing for the Transmittal of Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 1-2017. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have.
You have questions, Ms. Busaka? You're none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item? Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Did you have one? Go ahead.
So, Ms. Busaka, could you explain a little bit further what we're doing and why?
Sure, of course. The current policy in the comprehensive plan says that if a, if a wetland is five acres or larger, that it is automatically zoned OR, open space recreation, and designated conservation on the future land use map.
Okay.
OR zoning allows a number of uses, including golf courses, tennis clubs, parks as permitted uses. Limited uses include bed and breakfast. And conditional uses include single-family residential and public utilities.
Okay.
So those wetlands, even though they are designated OR, we could see a significant amount of development that would impact those wetlands. Another option is similar to the project that you saw the other, last meeting where all of the wetlands were preserved and they were moved, the development was moved up to the uplands.
Right.
And in the case, for instance, there in the new Publix there on South Cheney, on Cheney, there was a large wetland that was preserved by a preservation easement. The good news about conservation easements is that they're very, very difficult to get off of the property once they're on the property. Where a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning can be done by the vote of this board. So it somewhat limits the flexibility to change it in the, in the future, thus giving the wetlands an additional level of protection. But in addition to that, it also allows developers to transfer density off of that site and to move those, that development that could occur in the OR up to the upland portions of the site. So we think this is a win-win for both the property owner and the wetland.
So this would be similar to what we did the last meeting, which was basically we allowed development in the high parts and the rest of it remained wetlands.
That's correct. And, and this would be a conservation easement usually given to the water management district.
Okay.
And they don't give those up easily.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any. Open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have speakers on? Cards on this item? White speakers?
No, sir.
Does the applicant wish to speak if he's here?
We are here.
We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions on anything? I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve the Transmittal of the CPA as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, the Ordinance 41, there, 2017.
Ordinance 41, 2017. An ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Titusville for-
for the 2018-2022 Horizon relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
Florida statute requires the city's five-year capital improvement program of the Capital Improvement Element, CIE, to be updated annually. All governments are required to include a capital improvement element in the Comprehensive Plan that considers the need for and location of public facilities and provides a component that outlines the principles for construction, extension, or increase in capacity of public facilities, as well as a component that outlines principles for correcting existing public facility deficiencies, which are necessary to implement in the Comprehensive Plan. The planning period for this element is five years.
You have a presentation or comments? No? Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? I see none. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have cards on this?
No, sir.
We have no cards. Interesting. Does... Well, there is no... I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? You see no lights? Whoops, I see one on six. Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment. First of all, I was very impressed with the improvements that are coming, and specifically wanted to point out the $1.9 million for water meter replacement in the next five years. That caught my eye maybe more than anything, and the sincere effort the city has to improve that area. So I just want to make that comment.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Whoops, it's a roll call. Never miss one. Roll call, please.
I don't think we have a motion on that.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve the CIE update by adopting ordinance 41-2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Not? Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item is 8C.
Ordinance 44, 2017, an ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances relating to shipping containers by amending Chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending Section 28357 detached accessory building structure and Section 28365 parking or storage of motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats, airboats, or trailers in residential districts to prohibit shipping containers as within residentially zoned or used properties. Specifically amending Section 28373 temporary storage units relating to shipping containers and renumbering subsequent sections. Amending Chapter 34 procedures, specifically creating Section 34353 non-conforming structures, shipping containers, and renumbering subsequent sections. Amending Chapter 37 definitions to add the definition of shipping container, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. The second reading is scheduled for 12 December 17. The Planning and Zoning Commission will consider this ordinance on 6 December 2017. On 22 August 2017, council approved advisability to regulate the use of shipping containers as accessory structures in residential areas. The city's land development regulations currently do not specify the type of structures that can be used as accessory structures. Within the last several years, the use of shipping containers as accessory structure utilized as storage have been increasing. There are several issues to be considered relating to accessory structures. The building code requires structures over 120 square feet to obtain a building permit. If shipping containers, which can be as large as nine feet by 40, are properly anchored, the property owner may obtain a permit to place one in both residential and commercial areas. If a net... If an accessory structure is greater than 20% of the square footage of the principal structure, it's required to be architecturally the same. The proposed ordinance prohibits the placement of any shipping container as an accessory building, storage building, or living unit on residentially zoned or utilized property. Licensed contractors must use shipping containers for temporary housing of equipment and materials during construction as authorized by the city building permit. Again, this is the first reading. We have Ms. Busaka to answer any questions that you may have concerning this ordinance.
Ms. Busaka, any comments? City council, any questions of Ms. Busaka?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Ms. Busaka, and I know we're moving forward with this, or at least you're, you know, looking into this. I think the last time we spoke, I was concerned if I was to have one next door to me, you know, it'd be like having one of those old Winnebago's to sit there for years and years. But the... And I'm leaning, obviously, towards let's clean that up. The concern I might have is somebody who obtained one of those when it was okay and spent their $3,000 for one, and it's okay, and then we come to another day and say it's not okay. Is there a grandfather back out, help him out, get him out kind of clause?
Yes, sir, there is. First of all, based on our information, we have found that two permits were issued for these structures. The one was issued in 2013 and did have a final inspection. The second one, the issue... The permit was issued in 2017 and has not yet gone for final inspection. So if final inspection is not done by July 31 of 2018, that building permit will expire, and that will have to be moved off. However, if you'll go to page 145, you'll see under Section 4 of the ordinance, nonconforming structures. And we have stated that the... If there is a shipping container which has been placed on residentially zoned or used property that received a building permit, the building permit remains valid as of the effective date of the regulation, and it shall be permitted to continue for three years from the date of this regulation. Now, the way that I calculated the three years, I did a lot of research, and I found out that I'm taking a 10 by 40. If I were to buy a 10 by 40 shipping container, it would cost me approximately $8,000 if I built... Bought a new shipping container, which was about $6,500, and then it would cost approximately $1,500 to have it placed on my property and shipped there. So that total cost is $8,000. I then looked at the cost if I had to rent a unit in a mini storage warehouse. The largest unit I could find was a 10 by 10. So I said it would... If I wanted to fill a 10 by 40, then I would... I'm going to say I need four of those units. The small... The cheapest one I could find would cost... Four units would cost me $414 a month, or about $5,000 a year. So if I had purchased one, it would cost me about $8,000. If I were to spend that same money on a rental unit, it would cost me about $5,000 a year. Reasonably, I could then have started to get my cost back after about a year and a half to two years. And then I said, well, there may be something I don't completely understand about cost, so that's where it went to three. But that's my own calculations, and there may be a better way to do this.
Sounds reasonable. Any other questions from counsel? I hear none. Clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Would you call them, please?
Tom Porstand... Porstrom?
Honorable mayor, members of the council?
Sure.
I have four other neighbors here with me, and they've asked me to speak for them. They've signed cards, and if you would give me the time to speak, and they won't have to speak.
Does counsel agree with that?
Okay.
You got it. Thank you. I just heard Ms. Busaka's explanation, and I understand that. But we're talking about residential areas. Well, you're talking about devaluing property with these things. And apparently, that's not a concern for planning and zoning. It is for us. And when something is, first of all, illegally placed there, and then it is permitted two days later, when they could have used or should have used a permit... A section that I cited earlier, I can't... I just can't grasp how anybody can justify it. And, you know, it's not... It just doesn't make sense at all. And if somebody can explain to me of... And my... I asked Ms. Busaka in emails about ours specifically. That's our concern. We don't care what they did with the others if they permitted them. They're not in our neighborhood. They're not in our backyard. And nobody can answer the question. Is ours going to be permanent... Permanently placed there or not? Is that going to be allowed? If it is, the only option we have is go into court.
I might be able to help. And Mr. Fernstrom, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but first of all, let me tell you about the... It is the storage unit next to his, which the permit was issued in July of this year, and there has been no inspection on it. So if that inspection is not completed and they approve it before July of next year, then that permit will expire, and that will have to be removed. That's why I couldn't answer his question about whether or not it will be allowed to stay for any length of time. The second issue is that Mr. Fernstrom is referring to Section 28373, which is shown on page 143 of your package, and it talks about temporary storage units. And it clearly states that temporary storage units can only be used for 30 days. However, it only precludes truck bodies and semi-trailers and says... Doesn't specifically say anything about shipping containers. And in the case of the two that we've issued permits for, the request was not that it be used for a temporary structure, but that it be used for a permanent structure. And we could find nothing in our code that prohibited it specifically. Now, we do not believe that this is appropriate in a residential area. It is an industrial, commercial type of structure, and that's why we are recommending that it not be permitted. However, as you know, there's also the idea that people who have moved forward do have the right to have some... To have their investment brought, you know, utilized. And so that's why we are including the nonconforming structure language.
Is that helpful at all, sir?
Well, it's sort of an explanation. However, it does specifically state, and as I brought out at an earlier council meeting, the specific section... I don't have it with me tonight. That does deal with shipping containers specifically in residential areas. And it was the section that code enforcement cited it under. And that is... It deals specifically. There's no doubt about... They don't belong there. But permitting... Permitting there under 391, which is so vague. And Mr. Larrice can tell you, when I had the meeting with him and code enforcement and permitting, that I made the comment that you can literally back an old school bus into your backyard, take the wheels off, and have it permitted as a shed. And I go, yeah, you can, under that section. So this is what doesn't make sense. If it's that vague, it's a discretionary call by permitting. And to me, common sense would have said, you look at this other section that specifically names them and tells you what you can do with them. And I asked that they reconsider and rescind that permit. And they can do... They can do that.
Ms. Busaka, isn't that what you're trying to clear up with all of us?
Yes, sir, it is. But the decision of the building official is something that I can't override. And he looked at the building code, and because the zoning code says temporary storage units are designed and used primarily for temporary storage of building materials, household gold, goods, personal items, and other materials on a limited basis. When this gentleman said, I want to make it permanent, we felt that even though we did not believe it was the intent of this language, there was no language that specifically prohibited it.
So you're trying to rectify that?
Yes, sir, we are.
And we have another issue, and it's called a Burt Harris suit, which basically, there was a lawsuit where the city took away someone's rights or their... Something they paid for and went in under the... Under a proper... I won't say a proper ordinance, but went in under what the ordinance said, and court found in his favor. So we have to deal with that. So you're going to have to be a little bit patient and...
I'm not aware of that. I would like somebody to, you know...
Well, what I would suggest to you, sir, is... This is the first reading. We're not voting tonight. So if you...
The information I have, I strongly believe that this particular situation will not withstand a court challenge.
Are you a lawyer, sir, or a judge?
No, sir. But I... Trust me, we have one that will...
Sir, that's an opinion. That's all it is. It's not evidence.
That will take it. And this is my personal opinion.
Yes, sir.
And we don't want to go there. That's not what we want to do. I've been trying to avoid this right from day one.
Can I make a suggestion? And you seem to be somebody that's opening... Open to answers that maybe you might find reasonable, that you meet with staff. We're not voting tonight anyway, so you got another two weeks before we look at this again. Either speak to the city attorney, or the city manager, or Ms. Busaka with the questions you have. I tend to think that she's probably answered most of your questions, but that'll be up to you.
Okay. I just don't want this to get to the point where we're going to end up in a battle.
We're not going to accomplish anything tonight unless you...
You know, that's...
Have your questions answered.
And it's the only issue we have in that neighborhood. So I would think that somebody could step up and say, hey, we need to fix this. And I would... I'd like to find out what that case is that you're referring to.
I'll send it to you.
Mr. Fernstrom.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
I believe the last card is going to be Gary Bernard.
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Back in May of 2015, whatever, I applied for a permit to put it behind my house for an eight by 20 Connex, or shipping container, whatever you call it. And I explained to the guy at the permit office what it was, what I was wanting, and wanted to save sound, because I'm off of Hopkins and Olmsted there. That area, it's an industrial area, next to apartments, Deanie Pump, across the street. And there's break-ins and stuff like that. Even not too long ago, my house was broken into. But I wanted some safe, good, permanent structure in the back. And I explained to the guy what I was doing. And he said, yes, I can do that. I can't remember the fee. I think it was like $130, $40 I paid or whatever, but made sure I could put one in my backyard. So I applied for it, went and purchased a container, paid to have a backyard graded in the back and everything, paid for a crane, got it all in there. Now you're all saying I can't do that. How is that right?
We're saying you can do it for three years. We're saying you can do it for three years.
I went in letting them know as a permanent structure. So my mind is permanent.
I understand, sir. But laws change. These people have a different view of it than you do, and we have to look at the...
So when somebody applies for something and pays to do that, puts the money into it, y'all just say, oh, we changed our mind.
No, we say we'll give you your money back by letting you do it for three years. That's the value.
I agree with... I'm with that guy here. Ready to go.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to just talk?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? That's it?
No more cards, sir.
All right. For the next item. Did you want to speak?
I think I just had a question for staff.
I didn't see you put it on.
No, thank you. And this... Currently, how many permits are there? Are there just two?
That's the only that we could find in our files.
Of the two, only one has been approved, or one's...
That's correct. And I believe that it... Mr. Bernard is the gentleman who had the approved one.
Okay. So it was one?
Yes, and it would be three years from the effective date of this ordinance. So he would have had it for five years, because it's been there for two.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Next item is dog-friendly dining.
Ordinance number 45, 2017, an ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations related to dog-friendly dining, specifically amending Chapter 28 zoning. related to dog-friendly dining, specifically amending Chapter 28 zoning, Article 1 general provisions, specifically creating Section 2819 dog-friendly dining, allowing patrons' dogs at certain outdoor portions of public food service establishments, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading in public hearing. The second reading and final public hearing is scheduled for 12 December 2017. In 2009, city council adopted dog-friendly dining provisions consistent with Section 509.233 Florida statute. During the code update, the existing provisions of Section 59-270 were inadvertently removed. The proposed ordinance reinstates these provisions within Chapter 28 of the updated code.
City staff, you have any presentation or comments now? Council, any questions? I see none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No.
Okay. This is also a first reading, so we'll go to the next item.
Ordinance number 46, 2017. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment or operation of any medical marijuana treatment centers, medical marijuana dispensaries, or medical marijuana facilities within the City of Titusville, imposing ordinance 1, 2017, and ordinance 16, 2017, providing for an effective date.
The planning and zoning commission will consider this ordinance at their meeting on 6 December 2017. In November 2016, Florida voters approved constitutional amendment 2, allowing medical marijuana use in the state. On 10 January 2017, council adopted ordinance number 1-2017 to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana facilities to prevent sufficient time to develop regulations. This moratorium was due to expire on 9 July 2017. However, on 13 June 2017, city council approved an extension of the present moratorium through the adoption of ordinance 16, 2017, which is due to sunset on January 5, 2018. Senate Bill 8A, adopted in 2017 special session, limits the ability of local governments to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries. In anticipation of legislative, revisiting these regulations on 14 November 2017, council approved advisability to continue the moratorium for an additional 180 days should council desire the moratorium could be rescinded before the sunset date.
City staff, any comments? Council, any questions?
I don't have questions. I do have comment and something I'd like to say. I was one that proposed a moratorium because I was hoping that we would, the legislators would put some restrictions on where the dispensaries could be, i.e., not next to the schools, not next to the daycare, not next to the park. It is 500 feet. They did put in 500 feet from schools. I did talk to Coach P last week, and Coach P is saying they are not going to consider, there is nothing that they are going to consider limiting the placement of the dispensaries this year. And he said, so if we did it, it would be a year from now. So I think at this point, we really need to, to make a decision on whether we want to say yes or, or no. Mr., I did speak to Mr. Brum beforehand, and he said you might want to let, if, if we were wanted to do the moratorium, do a moratorium only until they have the chance to draft an ordinance, which would be the first meeting in January. And that would keep the staff from having to make decisions about any applications that came in. They would just hold off until the ordinance was done.
Okay. Member Diesel?
Similar comment. I was one who stated last week that I was very concerned about the locations. You know, having been at Titusville High School and Education for 35 years, I had some very big concerns about that. I don't like the fact that the state has pretty much taken away our home rule, and they're telling us where they can, not really where they can't be, they pretty much are going to be treated like drugstores. 500 feet from a school, that's barely a football field and a half. That doesn't excite me. But I started my comments last week, as I'll say now, you cannot, and I will not, ignore a 71% approval vote. Let me say that again, so the emails that come in heard me. I cannot, and I will not, ignore a 71% approval vote. That never was said. I simply am concerned about the location. I too have researched to find out that we are going to struggle to get them to make any move that way. So we may have to deal with that.
Do you have a suggestion as to what we do?
I, I would agree also that another moratorium is kind of kicking the can down the road. I think that we go yes or we go no, and I'm ready to go the way that we need to go. You know, the state's got our hands tied. And if they're not going to let us get untied, there's no reason to wait. And everything that I'm hearing, and everything that I'm seeing, and everything I'm inquiring about, to my disappointment, is they're saying that's not going to change. So I pretty much have on my plate, we have on our plate what we have, we have to decide if we're going to go ahead and go with a 71% vote of the people.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. And there's two things to consider. First is the, the current status that we've used as a tool, as a body, in a moratorium with the purpose of seeking the impact and just the opportunity to look at legislation and its impact on our community. I think that given a year from voting period, that we've had ample time to do that. There's two considerations for imposing a moratorium. What is, it's a constitutional right at this point, right? At least in the state of Florida. So one is the effect on the rights of the parties impaired by the contract, right? So we are denying that ability, if not contract, but we are denying that Florida-given right at this point. The second is that there's a bona fide emergency, and a moratorium is in response to a bona fide emergency. At this point, I would not consider it an emergency. I would consider, because we've had a year to look at it, I would consider it, there would be cause for concern, no matter which way you look at it, whether you deny rights of people, or you support it and, you know, worst-case scenario, whatever that may be. But I think at least from the moratorium standpoint, I am, as I stated before, I think that we are at a point where you got to go up or down. And my concern for the worst is, one, it's a denial of a right constitutionally. Second, ethically, I don't want to give false hope to people, right? So whatever the outcome that may be negative, in the same turn, there's somebody who really could benefit from it. And even though, just like, I think with some of our pharmaceuticals, that they can be abused, just like anything else, things can be abused, things can be bad, but I think from a moratorium, we're not stopping that from happening. I think that that's a different social issue. So being said, I, I think that we need an up or down on it, and I think that that would be appropriate. As far as which way to go with that, Mayor, I, I am, again, just stating the opinion, I believe at this point, that we are, I, I think that we should allow for dispensaries to, to come to Titusville at this point. And the rationale for that is that although I'm in agreement that the zoning provided to us from our state legislatures stinks, it's really, they really did a horrible job. They really did a horrible job. And it is intentional with the idea of that they are absolutely trying to take away cities' ability to govern, to govern from Tallahassee, which comes to, when you want your pothole fixed, call Tallahassee, not your local government, right? That's, that's, that's the idea. And the same thing to our dispensaries. But it is what it is. I also don't believe that there's a change anytime soon. We're probably another year and a half at a best-case scenario. If we were to get something out of session, that would change and evolve it. Being said, now that would be two to two and a half years for a denial of it. And, and I'm not okay with that. So although I don't like the way that it's written, I think that there is opportunity to look at, I would rather press non-conforming pharmacies in our own zoning requirements, meaning that we relook at what it means to be a pharmacy in Titusville, and what that definition now evolves to, because dispensaries have to fall under pharmacies from a zoning standpoint. So what we could do is look at our pharmacy zoning, adapt it moving forward. For our non-conforming properties, I'll live with it, because there's consequence to bad legislation from Tallahassee. And that's our consequence, is that they have put us in a bad spot. But it allows current pharmacies to continue doing what they're doing. If somebody was to take over the business, that's another issue, but I'll take that up with Tallahassee later down the road. And for new ones, then we, they, I think that they could fall into the parameters that would work for our community in something that we could have control on. So that's how I think to do it, and that would be my suggestion.
I, I would point out a couple of things. There's a lot of things in there I, I do agree with, but as far as it, it's not a right by federal law. And federal law is supposed to supersede state law. So you can't say they have a right yet, because the federal law still takes precedent. And one of the things we wanted to do during that 180 days is to see where everybody else was going. But maybe unfortunately, maybe fortunately, I don't know, but the majority of them seems to, seem to not gone anywhere at this point. And I still think it's, it's prudent that we find out if anything is going to change, or if the cities are going to get together on it and so forth, because once you start it, you're not going to be able to close that door for the Burt Harris and all of that. So I, I feel pretty strongly about doing another moratorium. We can do it a shorter period of time, if you'd like. But I do, I do feel it's worth doing, again, without having all the information on something we've, we've made mistakes before. I think it's prudent for us to put another, maybe a three-month one on. Member Nelson?
I just wanted to point out that even if we approve it tonight, we only get in our region, not in our county, in our region. And there's five, I believe, five regions in the state. And hopefully, Mr. Brum will correct me down there if I'm wrong. But in our region, which includes Orlando and several other large cities, if we reach 100,000 people on the patient registry, we're entitled to have four dispensaries. So our chances of actually getting one in Titusville are not that great. Right now, I think Ms. Busaka last week said we have 50,000, 51,000?
I just looked it up today, based on November 21st. There's 54,251 people on the registry.
So if, if anybody thinks that we're going to get one next week or next month, it's going to be a while. The statute does allow for delivery, and that may be the way people have to handle it between now and the time somebody decides to come into Titusville. But if they have a choice between Orlando and Titusville, I see them going to Orlando, I see them going to Winter Park, I see them going to Melbourne, to Daytona Beach, as opposed to Titusville. So...
Anyone else want to speak?
I tend to agree with you, Mayor, just on my thoughts last week. It concerns me greatly, again, the federal law issue. You have to pay in cash. There's just too many things that are still left, very murky, and if we're going to do something, I want to make sure we do it correctly. So that's kind of where I tend to lean.
If, six. Member Diesel?
And I agree. We don't want to rush into anything. And we moratoriumed, I believe the term was a year. You know, we're, we're looking it over, and we're, really what we're doing is we're waiting for the state to say, this is what's going to happen. But the state being the state, I don't see anything changing. Now, my question is, to whoever can answer it, maybe city council?
Attorney.
Yeah, there you go. City council?
Counsel.
If the state does come back later and say, you can do this, this, and this, and we have more control, but we have voted yes, what does that do to us?
That, that will depend on how the legislation is written, okay? And so it'll fall on that, as far as whose grandfather, and your ability to, if you allow it now and treat it as pharmacies, and then they open up and give you some more flexibility on zoning, in my opinion, those would be grandfather, not, but it all depends on how the legislation is written. So I'll have to defer. I can't answer that until I've seen the legislation, and how Tallahassee, how much authority they want to give us in that legislation.
Okay. Well, I, I feel like I never want to jump into anything quickly. I feel like we haven't jumped into it quickly. And it sounds to me like even if we vote yes, it's not going to happen in the next month, and it may not happen here at all. But I do stand with the difficulty of that 71% vote that, that stands firm to me.
I, I think in the way of compromise, it's probably going to take that, now, maybe not all that, the time, but certainly a month or two to get something written up. In the way of compromise, suppose we just do it for three months and see what comes from it. At the end of that time, we can, we can go further. But I just have a real problem with opening this door, because I know, once you open it, you, but there will be somebody who opens here, and then we may not want that to continue because the law has changed or something, but we will have it foisted upon us. So I would, I would ask for that compromise, but...
I was going to, and I don't mean to interrupt, I was going to ask for a moratorium until the second meeting in January. Would that, if we were going to consider an ordinance, would that give us time to get the ordinance?
Correct. You, you could extend the, this moratorium will terminate on January 5, 2018. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Right. So if you have, extend that moratorium, you could extend it as long as you desire. And if you give direction for staff to come back to you and draft an ordinance, whether to allow them or to ban them, come back to you, within that ordinance, you could repeal your moratorium at the same time. So...
Okay.
But I saw, I want to invite, you still, you do have cards, so the public wants to speak on this item.
Excuse me, if I could. I, I just wanted to, to let you know that the limiting factor that you were discussing is on medical treatment centers. There are currently 11 that have been approved. Each of those medical treatment centers may put in a number of dispensaries. Trulieve has 11 dispensaries within the state. So there is much more than just the numbers that you were quoting that are available within the state. You're welcome. I also want to let you know that a dispensary has opened in Palm Bay...
Correct.
And Satellite Beach has just voted to allow dispensaries there as well.
And they opened one in Orlando.
At least one, I believe two, I believe one just opened. But I just wanted to clarify the difference between a treatment center and a dispensary.
Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, are there cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
You can call them, please.
First card is, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, is N-A-D-A-R?
Nadav.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nadav Roshalmi. I'm a tourist here from Israel. I came about a week and a half ago to Titusville. First of all, it's by mistake, I hear this subject, and I would like to say something about it, but I would love to tell you, this town, I'm, I fell in love in a week in this, this town. I was traveling all around the states, coast to coast, from Montana to LA, Vegas, and everywhere during my life. And I love this place. I want to stay here about six months. And in a year from today, I'm running to be married in my own hometown in Israel. And I would like to tell you a little bit, I was the chief of security for the last four years in Israel. And we have, like, you know, in Israel, a lot of security and defense issues. Regarding the subject you're talking now, we actually saw lately in Israel, a lot of change regarding the marijuana medical uses. And even if it's leaking out and it's going to the environment, as a security point of view, from the police point of view, when we come to a group of kids that are drinking and using other things, the reaction from them is completely different than a group of kids that sit and, not kids, I'm talking about a group of people that sit and smoke, the reaction of smokers. Yeah, we are sorry, they are going on to... the reaction of smokers, yeah, we are sorry, they're going on to the side, completely different reaction. As in Titusville, I think this town is going really good in the last, because I was talking to a lot of people here, I'm looking in real estate investment opportunities here, and I see it's going up, and like, I heard in the last year, it's completely cleaned up. I was walking here for the first week, buy food on the streets, and I felt safe, I felt good, and these people are really nice and welcoming here.
Thank you.
And I think even if you look at a positive point of views of this decision, it's bringing a lot of, like, the bicycle trail over here, people that love to ride a bicycle, they have a lot of medical problems from riding, and a lot of them are using medical marijuana, and people with, with a lot of wealth, I mean, not, and people that will look to buy a house next to the center of the space, they renew the space program now, and I, I really feel it will help also in this point of view. Tourists will come for that, it will bring people riding the bicycle. But the most important, stay away from school, and actually educate the kids that, how it's prevented. You have a lot of campaigns that we are doing and showing people, showing the teenagers what are the effects if you use it badly, if you're drinking or smoking and all the effects. And if you will work on education, the kids, you don't need to hide it from the schools, you just need to educate them right, how to do and not to do, and work on this point of view, because it's, like you said, the whole state voted 70%, and it's going worldwide, I'm telling you, from Israel's. We, we see the huge difference between how it's, less and less people are drinking, and medical, and also the alcohol companies are on the.
I'm afraid your time is up, sir. Can you finish up?
All right, thank you, and I'm really enjoying the town. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Call, next card, please.
Kathleen Maronelli.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Maronelli. I live on Rolling Hill Drive-In here in Titusville, and I have spoken on this subject before. And at that time, I had asked that you all consider that, wouldn't it be nice if Titusville was a leader instead of just a follower? And we have a, the legislature in Tallahassee who are trying their best to go against the 71% of people that voted for medical marijuana in the state. They are doing everything in their power to keep it from being implemented, and that's wrong. I'm here tonight to ask you here to be, to show courage and compassion, because we are talking about medical marijuana. I've heard, "Opening the Door." Well, I'm sorry. You're talking about a moratorium, when there are people suffering today that would benefit from medical marijuana treatment. We're talking children on chemotherapy who are vomiting and can't hold food down, that would benefit from it. We're talking people with Parkinson's disease. We're talking about these, epilepsy. There are so many. We're talking about, we have veterans who have come back from various wars, who are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder and traumatic brain injuries. And we're denying them after they've risked their lives for us. So I'm sorry if I sound angry or, this is, I'm passionate about this. I'm not angry, I'm passionate. And I don't want to see a person suffer. I hear about, and I don't know honestly, do we have zoning about pharmacies and liquor stores in this town? Is there a distance from? There are, okay. And that's fine. But this is no different than a pharmacy or a liquor store. And yet, they're selling cigarettes in convenience stores. That's a proven health risk. That will kill you. Marijuana will not kill you. Opiates will kill you. So how about we stop looking and listening to reefer madness that we were raised on, that we're all, it's a gateway drug, and being afraid of where it's going to be distributed, it's going to be near a church, or it's going to be near a school? No, that is not the problem. Then you should be worried about drugstores and liquor stores and convenience stores, and not put this onus.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
And this wrong thing on this, okay? That's all I got to say. Courage and compassion, be a, be a leader.
Thank you, ma'am. Member Nelson.
Thank you. I was just going to add, I was concerned about the liquor stores and pharmacies also being in the vicinity of schools and daycares and parks. And I found out this morning that we do allow that. So that's sort of disheartening, that, because I look at it, and I think, one, neither of them really should be there. None of them should be there. So, but anyway, apparently, we do.
City Attorney? Isn't there something called Charlotte's Web that was passed several years ago?
Yes, sir. That's the low THC form for certain children, you know, cancer, certain patients have the low THC, THC form available to them through the Charlotte.
And that's presently available and has been for a number of years?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Clerk, next item.
Ray Haskell.
Speaker.
Good evening. Ray Haskell, Titusville, Florida. Been here before, folks, been over a year. Nobody said, hey, where do you think we ought to put this thing? Nobody said this? Come on. And I'm flabbergasted. Last month that we were here, four spoke, four, one set spoke against. Here we are, 80-20 again, four to one. We know we voted, we've had hearings. You don't need any more proof. The data and anecdotes are there. Walter, open this door.
Are you talking to me, sir?
We were founded in 1867. We don't have to live there. And, and we don't have to stay there. There's a bright new 21st century out here. People are dying out there. She talked military. PO-3 Gary Garrett. Senior Master Sergeant Jerry Schellert. Gary Sweeney. God, Gary lived a miserable death. Miserable. He'd come back from chemo, lie like a lump. Yeah, you can give him pills, and they lie like a lump, and they lose weight, and they can't eat. And then when they do eat, they get opioids, and they get constipation. And then they can't push, and they can't get rid of it, and they lose weight, and they die. Damn it!
Sir, calm yourself. There's no need to shout.
I am passionate.
We can hear you perfect.
Not angry.
I don't care if you're passionate. We don't need people shouting.
Well, until you've had to carry a dying 80-pound man down a set of stairs with death, help me. Give me the tools to help these people. Thank you.
Clerk, any other cards?
Last card is Kurt Leedy.
Gee, I thought he was passionate. Wait till I get going.
Kurt Leedy, Titusville, Florida.
Thank you. Very good. I was listening to your debate. You know, what this debate is not about, because it's been done, and that's the advantages and disadvantages of medical marijuana. That's been done. Constitutional right. You were shaking your head. That's what this is about. I agree with you. There are those in Tallahassee that don't want this law. I looked on the Internet today, found, maybe the city manager might know, another lawsuit in Miami-Dade suing the state of Florida for dragging their feet on this. But one of the things, with a couple of exceptions, that I heard when you guys were debating, was you were debating inside baseball, pissed off at Tallahassee because they're not letting cities do things. This is about relief for patients. And I really didn't hear that coming from the dais. The people in Titusville that need the drug. So the reason I'm here tonight, and the reason I'm passionate, because you guys know that, because of my Debbie's cancer. I've heard public officials get up and say, oh, they can drive if we don't want to do it in Titusville. Have your breasts removed, have.
Mr. Leedy, I will give you the same instruction.
Have seven.
Mr. Leedy, calm down, sir.
Have seven chemotherapy, and see if you can lift your arms to turn the steering wheel. What about those with Lou Gehrig's disease, MS? How are they going to drive? I would suggest some of you, or people in earshot here, go read the effects of chemotherapy. So I'm saying to you, end the moratorium. Three months, oh, let's give it three more months. I'm like you, I did my research with our representatives, there's going to be no action coming out of Tallahassee. So it's like you're half-pregnant right now. Either vote to do it, or vote not to. But then you tell the 71% that voted for it in this county. Can I have a couple more minutes?
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You've got it.
When Deb came home, whether you can get marijuana or not, it's helpful. And after you've had the surgery, then you go, you wait, and then you go do seven weeks, seven sessions of chemotherapy, 21 days apart, and you come home on the second, or you come home, and on the second day, you start ending up in the fetal position, because you've just gotten drugs that are killing cells in your body with another drug that's making bone marrow produce cells in your body. This stuff helps, guys. So I really urge you, I really urge you to, whether it's January or whatever, is to instruct planning and zoning to pass an ordinance, ending the moratorium, and let's get on with Final conclusion I want to make, and that's with regard to public policy, when we talk about drugs, and this lady mentioned it. When Deb was up at our cancer center, let's all go up there tomorrow, and you ask the doctors, not that they're doing anything wrong, they want to make sure people don't have pain. Deb, would you like 60 or 90 Percocets to take home? And then we talk about an opo, or, yeah, epidemic in this country, where he could have prescribed this kind of stuff. So I agree with, with the three of you up here. I mean, just either do it or don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
For, and Kathy, I, for both of you, I don't want anybody to think that we're insensitive to the suffering of people and our citizens. I've gone, undergone chemo, my family's undergone chemo, both my mom and dad, friends, friends have undergone chemo. For some of us, we didn't use cannabis. Some of my friends use cannabis. Found out afterward, I was a good prosecutor, they told me afterward, but I can tell you that it did, did help. So I don't think we're here to really debate whether it's useful or not, because it is a useful tool. I mean, I see it as a useful tool.
Yeah, and I didn't, I did not mean to imply, I know all of you, I've talked to all of you on this subject.
Yeah.
I know all of you are compassionate people. So I didn't mean to imply that at all. But there are people, there are public statements, not necessarily coming from this room, where it's all about the inside baseball, state of Florida versus the municipalities.
Yeah.
And I think that sometimes it's lost in that debate, is the person, Deborah Leedy, or of the world, that are, that were hurting.
Or my mom, or my dad.
That need this stuff.
Yeah.
For possibly one or two stores in Titusville.
So I don't think that's really the, the issue.
Right.
I think we understand that. The question for, I think, all, all of us is, if we do it, how do we do it the best way, the most effective way, where our city is growing and, and everything is good? Because that's what we want for a city.
Right.
So.
Well, I think Matt's suggestion too, is that you, you end the moratorium, and then take a look at this whole pharmacy situation.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know what the city's ordinance, or zoning is for that, but if you look at certain things by, and I talked to Member Diesel, by schools.
Yeah.
You know, you look at Knox-McRae and, no, not Knox-McRae, but Barna and, yeah, Knox-McRae, the old Publix. Great location, great developer, you could put a pharmacy there, but you're close to, to schools.
Yep.
So, so anyway, I hope that you vote to end the moratorium and instruct the planning and zoning to do so, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, sir. Ms. Busaka, you know, I think we discussed this before, but if you refresh my memory, as we've had this moratorium, my understanding is that we also have, as a city, been looking at various ways to implement that from other cities for model bases, if this was to pass at some time. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're not starting from scratch. Is that correct?
No. Well, it depends on where you want to go.
Okay.
If you, if you, if the council wants to, us to create an ordinance that would regulate all pharmacies, then that would take some substantial time, because we have to notify people that could become nonconforming and make that assessment. Remember that we're talking pharmacies are in almost every grocery store, every Walmart. We're not just talking standalone pharmacies. So that would, could be a substantial impact, and that would, could take some time. If council is saying either to prohibit it or to permit them under the statute, that would be less time, and could be done rapidly. But the other would take a little more time.
If it was, and I get the denial, excluding the pharmacy route, but to approve as, when you say rapidly, are we two months, three months?
I think the hard part would be the advertising. I believe that we could probably have this done by the end of July. My suggestion would be to give us the ordinance, allow us to write an ordinance the way that the attorney recommended, that we actually end the moratorium at the same, in the same ordinance. So.
January.
January, thank you. I'm sorry, no wonder people's faces look so odd. But because, because if this were to get tabled or something like that, I don't want us to get caught in a place where we have to make a decision because, you have to make a decision because of the advertising. But it's so easy to write one ordinance that will both do whatever you want to do and end the moratorium at the same time.
So, and I guess here's my, my last comment, sir. So a couple of things I heard, and, you know, not a sob story, but there is a reality of some points that were brought up. So, and this is just for personally, I definitively have people in my life who have pill problems. If you don't, God bless you. I'm telling you right now, that is, that one hits home hard for me. Additionally, I got people in my life who have smoking marijuana problems. I do, but they have a substance abuse issue, right? Medical marijuana, or not medical marijuana, just marijuana's been there. Medical marijuana, or not medical marijuana, just marijuana has been their drug of choice, but it's been their drug of choice for 30 years, right? So, that is what it is. But they also, I think, have, I think there are some other issues where they use that to kind of self-medicate for other things that either don't have the ability or desire to go rest on. So, I guess what I'm saying is that there are issues that come along with this that aren't necessarily the concern of the marijuana. Folks are seeking comfort and relief or compassion in a way that they find accessible. And I'm, I am much more comfortable with somebody smoking a joint or whatever, I don't, whatever it is, to relieve themselves from being humped over in a corner, can't get off the couch because you're in pain, or to alleviate sucking down six OxyContin's a day to get through the day. I would much rather take option A or B in two reasons. Number one, I think that I attribute, from a criminal activity, I see a lot more people who are emboldened criminally to go find OxyContin than I am to go get marijuana. I really believe that. I think that when people go out, if that's their form of relief, I think that if there is, it transitions to OxyContin's or pills, to heroin, to fentanyl, right? That that train is a lot different than when I see someone who found marijuana for self-medication for some reason. I'm just saying, it's a default. We don't have an answer on the mental health issue. We don't. So, I'll take the lesser of. So, that's one. The other is that, from my personal background, so, I teach kids, and I feel, I feel comfortable in having that discussion. The gentleman, he mentioned having a discussion on it, and we do in school. I don't know if we're supposed to or not, but I know that we do talk about it. And we talk about good, bad, what it's going to cost you if you become abused to anything. This can be one choice. So, I think that conversation is happening. And I don't think that the addition or access of a dispensary is going to be a whole lot different than the same way that somehow or another our kids still find alcohol. They still, so, they find, and I've got to be honest, our kids still already find weed. That's not new. So, those are some things, like, I don't think that we have such a great cap on it, like, this is somehow we're, you know, going to expand the use. The last one is that, for many years, I worked in the hospice field. And I can't tell you how it's just dead wrong, it's dead wrong, the way that I've seen a medical industry either profit or, from a treatment standpoint, folks will go bankrupt finding comfort from something, or go without totally, or lose house because they just physically can't, they just can't get past it. And so, I just, and the worst, to your point, is that opioids, if you're constipated from an opioid and you're 80 years old and frail, your belly becomes distended and you die. That's a miserable death. And so, those things, again, I know that there's a larger picture sometimes, but I do have a compassion. And I think of our most vulnerable, I look at from our mental health, I go, it's better than the option we got. From our kids, I think we're probably talking about the same thing. And from those who are dying, I go, yeah, that's probably something that would be relief if they would so choose to use it. So, that's, that's, I guess, holistically the picture I'm looking at. And as far as where to go, I would roll it in January, but I do respect the idea of trying to figure out kind of along the way. I do respect that, sir. I think that with the addition of Orange County, which is right next door with Orlando, with Satellite, with Palm Bay, that wave is coming. So, I think that we've kind of crossed that threshold, but I respect the idea of the patience.
Thank you. Member Diesel?
I just think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I more than appreciate the stories that I heard out there and the passion that they were told with. But I also, Kurt, you and I have spoken, make it clear, that's not been missed on me. Never has it been missed. It won't be missed. But my issue, when I put in for the moratorium, was the state, the state handcuffs and not giving us the opportunity to have any say where this goes. That was my, I never had an issue with the benefits of marijuana, medical, let me say medicinal every time, but medical marijuana. There's never been a doubt about that, or it never would have been on the ballot. And I've seen the videos, and I did the research, and I know your stories, they're out there a million times. And so, that, I just want to make it real clear that that's perhaps why the discussion up here, I think that is such a given, and I think we all understand that, and we all want to, you know, see that happen. And I don't want to say it too many more times, but along with the 71%. But I don't want you to feel like we missed on that. But my, what's on my plate and where I have to make a decision is, they're saying you, it's going to go wherever we want because you're not going to have any say, but we've got the other issue over here. So, that's why it may have seemed a little bit less than you would want it.
We have no more cards, right, Clerk? Okay. We spent a lot of time on this. This is a first reading, however, so there is no vote tonight. What I would suggest, and I'll ask council if they have any problem with it, or make other suggestions if they want, but Ms. Busaka, you've heard of speaking tonight, you see the different sides. Can you come back and give us choices that we can vote on the next time?
I can give you choices now. I mean, I don't want to.
We're not voting now, Ms. Busaka.
Okay.
So, and consider what was said up here and give us some choices so that we can make some clear decisions. It's a first reading. It's a first reading.
Right. This is not.
You have to have two readings.
But.
It's on the. Okay.
Well, can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Make it maybe a little bit more clear that I think at least three of us would like to see an ordinance allowing dispensaries and maybe regulating a little bit the pharmacies where they can be. Am I clear, am I as clear as mud?
Yes, ma'am. It's just, you're not going to get a very good answer in, on December the 12th because the agenda deadline is this week, and that gives me about three days to do research.
I understand.
So, you will not be getting a very good answer until January.
Okay. That's fair. But if we give you that sort of direction to go in, then you can work on it. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is second readings, public hearings, quasi-judicial. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the rules, please?
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. Those opposed will be heard second. And those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk.
Mr. City, oh, sorry.
City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card?
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager? Are you through, sir?
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
Item F is the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, SSA number 3, 2017, which includes the related ordinance number 42, 2017, and then you'll have a rezoning ordinance number 43, 2017. I can read both of those ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 42, 2017, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by changing the land use designation on a portion of a 44.5 acre parcel located on the east side of State Road 405, approximately 2.2 miles north of Fox Lake Road, from conservation future land use designation to the high-density residential land use designation and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 43, 2017, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present multifamily high-density residential R3, multifamily medium-density residential R2, and open space recreational OR zoning to planned development PD zoning on a portion of 44.5 acre parcel and a 2.73 acre parcel located on the east side of State Road 405, approximately 0.2 miles north of Fox Lake Road and providing for an effective date. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as local planning agency, recommended approval of this action 5.0. The applicant, William Alcock, on behalf of the owner, Fox Lake Hammond LLC, is requesting to amend the land use on approximately 9.254 acres and rezone approximately 25.67 acres of two properties totaling a total of 48 acres located east of South Street, State Route 405, and north of Fox Lake Road. The request is to amend the land use map from conservation land use designation to high-density residential land use designation. The request also proposes to rezone the multifamily high-density residential R3, multifamily, medium-density R2, and open space recreational OR zoning district to new planned development PD zoning with master plan for purposes of constructing a new residential subdivision with 61 lots. The lots will be a minimum of 50 feet wide and 6,000 square feet in area. A PD zoning requires 35% of the 25.67 acres development to be dedicated to open space. The portions of the property not included in the PD are wetlands, which will be dedicated to the St. John's Water Management District with a conservation easement.
Ms. Busaka, any comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Wanted to give you some zoning history on this property. The property was R2 and R2A in 1983, and then was rezoned to R3 and R2, which is multifamily, and OR in 1993. It, property was previously proposed to be developed with 107 units. The preliminary plat and engineering was approved, however, the development did not move forward, and the final plat was not requested. Because this is a planned development, the applicant has the right to come in and request something that doesn't fit into any specific zoning and kind of create their own district. And this, if you will look on page 164 of your documents, you can see the difference between the current standards of R3 and the proposed. And I want to bring a couple of things to your attention. Currently, the R3 will allow 2,000 square foot property lots. The proposal is for 6,000 square foot lots. The current standard is 20 foot wide, and the proposal is for 50 feet wide lots. The minimum square foot is currently 800, and the proposal is 1,000. You'll see that the front setback is the same. There is a reduction in the side, I'm sorry, the rear and side setbacks from the R3 standards. In addition to that, this planned development also would limit the building coverage to 45% rather than the 50%. And under the R3, there is no open space required. This plan will provide 30% open space. To the north of this property, along Joe Murell Drive, there are townhomes that are at nine units an acre. To the south of this property, there is Residential 1, and the units, it's about one unit an acre. Lots are a little bit larger than that, but that's approximate. This property is proposing 2.3 units an acre, which staff feels is a good transition between the very small lots along Joe Murell Road, which are between 27 and 16 feet wide, and the larger 1.5 acre lots to the south. In reviewing this, the staff has found some things that we want to bring to your attention. The required open space in the PD is 35%, but there is the option of a 5% credit being given if there is public improvements. In this case, there will be a fountain placed in a pond for aesthetics. A walkway will be provided to access a covered pavilion overlooking the pond and the wetlands. And the covered pavilion will have picnic tables. So, because of that, the open space may be reduced from 35 to 30%. In addition to that, the maximum cul-de-sac length, which is typically a 500 feet, is being proposed to be 1,500 feet. We want to make sure that you are aware of that. In this case, the OR zoning was applied in 1993, and at that time, there was no specific verification of that. The Comprehensive Plan Policy 116.2 does allow wetlands to be redesignated if they can provide an environmental review showing that the wetlands were not ground-truths at the time. So, the wetlands that are being recommended for change are generally those which have not been shown to be wetlands because of the environmental study that was done. There is an impact of approximately 0.73 acres of wetlands, and based on the documentation submitted by the applicant, credits, 2.9 credits were completed from the Farmington Mitigation Bank to mitigate these wetland impacts. The staff has found that the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment is located within the city's urban service area. There's water and sewer available, and the land use change will not endanger agricultural conservation or areas of open space. The rezoning is found to be consistent with objectives 1.14, policies 1.146, 1.149, and 1.16.2 of the comprehensive plan. Levels of concurrency will be required to be met prior to approval of the preliminary plat. There is adequate access on to South Street, and the development of the area, as I said before, will, we believe, is a good transition between the two significantly different surrounding zonings. The land development regulations require a 30-foot buffer along South Street, which is provided. The remainder of the property will be buffered from the surrounding uses with a minimum of 20 feet, which is also required under the code. The uses within the PD must be found to be consistent with the future land use designation and single-family is consistent with that. Finally, the staff recommends approval of both the planned development rezoning ordinance and the master plan, as well as the small-scale amendment.
Anybody, council, have a question from Ms. Busaka at this point? I see none. I'll open the public hearing, Clerk. Do we have cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Could you call them, please?
William Alcock.
Good evening. William Alcock, 3160 North Dixie Highway, Northeast Palm Bay. Good evening, sir. The applicant for the project. We've worked closely with staff along the way with this project. Staff concurs that we meet all the present regulations and codes, and we're consistent with the comp plan. In our initial meeting with the staff, we were looking at the existing permitted project, which was a multifamily project of 107 units. The St. John's permit is still active on that project. We contemplated reactivating those permits here within the city. However, it was determined that a single-family development was more appropriate at this time with the way the present market is. So, we worked closely with staff to come up with the plan that has been. So we worked closely with staff to come up with, um, the plan that has been presented. What we've done is tried to avoid all wetland impacts as much as possible. There was an existing wetland that was previously permitted, has been mitigated for, all that's taken care of, just requires a modification to the Saint John's and, um, Army Corps permits. With respect to, uh, buffers and landscaping, this plan preserves far more of the existing oak trees and vegetation that lies within the site. The previous plan, um, in the upland area that we are requesting the rezoning for, from the O R to the single, to the P D zoning, uh, most of the oak trees were being, uh, removed from that. Um, in this new plan, we preserve most of those trees, and we're providing a park area on the south side of the, um, the cul-de-sac, which will preserve a lot of those trees. We'll put some picnic tables and improve that area for, for their use. In addition, the park area at one of, near one of the retention ponds will be available to the public. We'll have a pavilion, covered pavilion, and possibly some other infrastructure there. We've increased our, our buffer areas where at all possible. You can see along the, the, the north and whatnot, um, it's not just a typical twenty-foot buffer. It extends, uh, and expands out around the curve of the lots and et cetera. Same along the south. Along the south, we're, we are a twenty-two-foot buffer, which expands slightly in some areas with a minimum of twenty-foot buffer. We'll meet all of the, uh, engineering requirements as, as requested during the permitting process. If you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
I have a question.
All right, ma'am.
Looks like there are sixty-one units, correct?
Sixty-one units, correct.
Okay, as opposed to one oh seven.
Opposed to one oh seven, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none, clerk. Please call the next card.
Rodney Honeycutt.
Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue. Um, we're very proud of this project tonight. I think as, um, staff mentioned, and, um, Bill, uh, worked closely with staff so we could have a project that transitioned from the low density to the high density instead of the higher-density project that was there. And closely with the environment to save trees, to minimize any wetland impacts, and that there is an existing, uh, Water Management District permit, and, um, we're just modifying that permit to continue forward. And so I would request that you approve this project so we can move forward. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I see none, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please, clerk.
Roy Pence.
Is anyone else out there that wants to speak? Will I come forward so we don't have to spend as much time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Roy Pence, thirty-one sixty Dixie Highway, Palm Bay, representing the Fox Lake Hammock LLC. I'm the, the manager of that, that entity. Just wanted to, uh, share what's been said already, that we met, worked very hard, provide a nice housing project for the city of Titusville, that we feel like it's a, uh, a great improvement over what was originally planned several years ago. We reduced the units from a hundred and seven to sixty-one. Feel there's a real need in the area for this type of housing this community will provide. We've worked very closely with the staff, and we have, as you can see in your con, staff comments, we've met their concerns, we've addressed their concerns, and they are recommending approval. We thank, we request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Um, the last speaker is Kathleen Burson.
My name's Kathleen Burson, Titusville, Florida. I did speak many years ago when this project was, was originally approved, um, which I think was, uh, two thousand eight or nine, that the multifamily project was approved. I gave each of you a handout, and I just want to let you know I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbors, not all of the neighbors, but, um, Pam Ginn and her daughter are here. Uh, Diana Baranek is a direct neighbor of the, um, to the south. These neighbors live on one-acre lots, uh, directly adjacent to this property to the south. So I would ask if I could have some additional time since I'm speaking on behalf of theirs, and I didn't have a lot of time to be able to edit this down like I really would have liked to for you. I know it's a lot to, to cover, but I'll try to abbreviate as much as I can.
Go ahead and we'll.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Titusville is resplendent with birds and wildlife. However, the populations are dwindling with every new development. It has been made easier to destroy forested lands in the city, which we have limited areas of, and are now being targeted for infill development. One of our most pristine intact natural areas is the forested land in the core of our community running north and south. Just pointed out. From Knox McCray up to Harrison Street, then up to South Street, and then up along the west side of Singleton Avenue, that large green area that I just pointed out. These contiguous conservation land use areas are primarily wetlands, yes, and that's why they were designated conservation in the early nineties, I believe that's what, um, our planning director said. The areas are roadless, and they were not pre-platted for, for development. So they weren't in, this area was not intended for development. Um, so there's no roadway easements. Behind my house, which is the south, the Knox McCray portion, that was platted with drainage and roadway easements for future development. But this area was not, there's no roads going through there. Um, it's just a huge pristine corridor of land that is all forested and is a beautiful matrix of uplands and wetlands, mostly wetlands. But these uplands crawl through there, and it's just a really beautiful, um, area of the city. The beauty of this natural core of our city is the interrelationship of the wetland, wetland, upland and wetland ecosystems. They are co-dependent, in a good way, on each other. Um, they are primarily undisturbed today. The purpose of the conservation land use is to protect wetlands, yes. Wetlands need uplands, however. Why is this relationship so critical? Because wetland species spend part of their life cycle in the uplands and vice versa. You know, it's just a, the, no ecosystem is an island. They all, they all work together. So, uh, for example, ducks, wood ducks, which migrate here, they nest in the pine trees and the uplands. But we know ducks live in the wetlands. So, you know, there's just, you can't separate the two. That's, that's my main point here. So, and there's, I gave some other examples. This Fox Lake Hammock property does not, does have endangered species also in the uplands. Gopher tortoises, indigo snakes, there's other species that aren't classified endangered or threatened, like hawks and barn owls, barred owls, um, great-horned owls, screech owls. It's just, these areas are so diverse and, you know, hummingbirds and things. Once you take that forest down, they're gone. You know, you can't put a feeder out in your backyard for a hummingbird to come to if you don't have a forest nearby. It's just, these forests support a lot of wildlife. Um, looking at the aerial and the staff report, and I included that in my report to you, you can see that the Fox Lake Hammock development is proposing additional housing right into the heart of this pristine, otherwise pristine conservation land use area. This will have ne, negative effects upon the wetlands and set a negative precedence for the city's largest conservation land use area. That big green area, that's, that's really the core of our, our natural areas within the city. So as far as the current proposed land use zoning goes, the thirty acres of existing conserva, thirty plus or minus, um, of the existing conservation land use, O R zoning allows for six houses at one house per five acres, right now, already. So the rezoning request to go to P D, I made a mistake in my report, I said multifamily because I, I didn't quite understand it at first, um, is for seventeen houses. I'm talking about this area. There's seventeen houses proposed right here. I'm not talking, this was already the multifamily zoning. This is the conservation zoning that's being, uh, land use and, um, open space recreation zoning that's being proposed to be changed to be the same as this, all P D, but it's basically high-density housing. It's, that, that name is being taken away in, in lieu of, for P D instead. So, um, what will seventeen houses bring into the heart of our largest pristine conservation land use area? During construction, seventeen, the construction of seventeen houses, the construction vehicles, the tractors, the bulldozers, the construction of roadways, streetlights, stormwater ponds, workers paint, chemicals, equipment, tar and asphalt. Um, post-construction, on a daily basis, around forty-two adults and possibly thirty-four children or more, friends, visitors, et cetera, cats and dogs, more than seventeen homeowner cars and trucks, garbage trucks, postal trucks, delivery trucks, mosquito trucks spraying chemicals highly toxic to bees, songbirds, birds of prey, bats and fish, pesticides and herbicides, lawns and invasive plants, lawn mowers, streetlights, porch lights, light pollution, et cetera. Um, I have three examples of similar projects to support the, the, what I'm asking you. They, they set a precedence in the city and passed approvals. Um, they are each numbered on this plan, one, two, and three. Number one is the Publix Highway, at Highway fifty at the corner of Barna Avenue and Highway fifty. This, um, Ms. Saka did mention that this was, um, dedicated to Saint John's, this ninety-two acres, that green space on number one. It is not only wetlands, it is very similar to this property. It's got these fingers of uplands. They were originally going to put a road right through there, winding through these beautiful wetlands, taking all the uplands out and put these houses along here with all the, this infrastructure I just mentioned for this project. What they did was, after several public hearings, they came back and said, "We're going to give you the entire ninety-two acres for conservation and leave the residential component out of our project. We just want to develop the commercial portion along Highway fifty." So, we got it. That was a huge win for the neighbors. They use that area for nature hikes, walkways, there's giant live oaks back there, there's hundreds of, hundreds of gopher tortoises. It's just an incredible diversity, a matrix of uplands and wetlands, again, very similar to this, um, the Fox Lake project. This finger of upland is just completely being extracted from the, this matrix, this healthy matrix, is just being stripped out and putting all this infrastructure and lights and houses in here. So number two, another similar, some similar characteristics, is the assisted living facility that was approved at the southeast corner of Fox Lake Road and South Street. This project won a hundred-foot buffer between the one-acre homes.
Excuse me one second. The, the light wasn't put on.
Yes, sir. You said that you were going to allow her to speak.
No, I was going to let it run to three minutes and then.
Sure.
Make the decision after.
Well, thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it. I know this is long.
You continue.
But thanks. Okay, um, so the owner of the parcel requested a rezoning of the property at the corner of South Street and number two, and Knox, uh, Fox Lake Road. And, um, in order to allow that prop, that rezoning to go forward, we won for this neighborhood, which I'm not in that neighborhood too, but not directly adjacent, a hundred-foot buffer between the one-acre lots and this, uh, future A L F. Then number three on here is the Singleton-Harrison wetland. I kind of call it that, and I think others do too. Um, it runs along Singleton between ninety-five and Singleton, primarily wetlands. Staff turned down, staff and counsel, uh, the advice of staff, turned down this rezoning, because they were proposing a causeway through the wetlands to get to the upland that was next to ninety-five. So it just, it was turned down flat. So what my request is, I'm on the last paragraph of my third page, is there's just more to saving wetlands than just not developing them. Wetlands need uplands, and uplands need wetlands. Please, in the same manner as the Publix Highway fifty, just leave the O R portion alone. And as far as housing goes, just develop the front portion, which has already taken in, out an entire scrub habitat, beautiful scrub habitat, just, you know, take that part, but leave the O R as it is. And then they can, they, instead of relocating the tortoises outside the city, they can relocate them if they have to towards the back end on the uplands that are, um, they can allow the ones that are there to stay. Uh, they can create trails and passive recreation for the proposed Fox Lake neighborhood, Hammock neighborhood. Um, the O R zoning allows for this. This will keep the construction cars, pesticides, and all of that stuff, dogs and cats, um, out of the conservation area, and this will maintain the compatibility with the neighboring one-acre houses to the south, um, and be compatible with the wetlands. You know, this density is not compatible with the wetlands. It's, and, uh, there's no buffer being provided of any substance along here, and they're wiping out the wetland here to get, just to get this road through.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, mayor. To get this road through here, they're wiping out this wetland, all this area is wet here, even on these adjacent properties, there's a problem. So putting that road through is going to cause additional problems for these neighbors, and if you provide at least a hundred-foot buffer, that would at least make it compatible along the lines of the, what the A L F did. But I would ask that you just leave the O R alone and allow them the density up front. Thank you so much.
Thank you. City clerk, are there other cards?
No, sir.
Applicant, would you like to make a rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay, with respect to the area that's presently zoned R, O R, we know that that was, uh, zoned at a time where they, they took aerial, aerial maps and did not ground-truth the, the wetlands. The intent of that zoning was to preserve the wetland areas, and it is common practice to come back when you have wetland determinations that have been approved by the appropriate agencies, which we have and have permits for, to determine where the, what the uplands are. So the development area is all within the upland area. Now, the other thing that's happening here is there's, the Water Management District has determined that you have to have a minimum twenty-five foot, um, minimum fifteen-foot, average twenty-five-foot upland buffer between wetlands and development. We're providing far in excess of the, of that average twenty-five-foot upland buffer between the development area. As a matter of fact, approximately fifty percent of the upland within the upland area being rezoned from O R to the, to the P D is upland. Only approximately fifty percent is being developed. So when she's saying that there is, there's no buffers, there's no uplands remaining, we're only developing approximately fifty percent of the, of the uplands within that area that's being rezoned. And we have adequate buffers as determined by the Water Management District and the, uh, um, Army Corps of Engineers. With respect to the tortoises, we always have to get a tortoise permit. The best thing to do is just relocate them. We haven't done a resurvey of the number of tortoises there. We wait until we get through the zoning and it's time for development. We'll get all of that done. We've had the environmental reports done, those have been turned in, et cetera, and there are no other species within the upland areas that we know of. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Sir? Sir?
Mr. Ed, you said there was a more than twenty-five-foot buffer?
Yes.
What, what size buffer is it?
Upland.
Yeah.
Upland, it's, it consists of oak trees, palmettos.
She said what size?
What size?
She said what size?
What width?
It's minimum twenty-five foot.
Okay.
It's, it ranges from two-hundred feet to twenty-five feet. If you'd like, I can show you a sketch that would be helpful.
Would you find?
I think you have this map.
Probably do. Sorry.
This being the development area.
Okay.
All of this is upland preservation area here. That goes into conservation easement.
Okay.
So you, they won't be able to do anything with that.
Anybody else like to see this?
This represents the development area. All of this is upland buffer area.
I see none, sir. Thank you. Oh, wait a second.
Work for staff, sir.
Go right ahead. You're, you're fine, sir.
And is that correct on how we arrived at kind of the outlay of our maps? The methodology explained by the app?
Yes, we used the wetland inventory maps, but they were not ground-truthed at the time.
Right. So during this permitting process that?
Yes, sir.
That takes place and then submitted to the Army Corps and Saint John's?
Yes. And once we get, once we get that information, then we modify our maps.
Anything else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I point out that the Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency recommended approval five-zero. Counsel, a discussion? Yes, ma'am.
If I could ask Mr. Broome to repeat what we would have to find to deny it? What findings we would have to make?
Well, your decision needs to be based on competent substantial evidence. If you've heard testimony that an item is consistent with a comprehensive plan and consistent with your rezoning code, then the burden would shift to the council if you wanted to deny it, to come up with an overriding, with a public purpose to do that. In addition, when it comes to rezonings, if you want to deny it, you need to point to the provision of the comprehensive plan or the zoning code that would establish a basis for your denial.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I guess we're ready to vote. This would take a roll call. Oh, I need a motion first of all. The recommendation from staff is approve the planned development rezoning ordinance in Fox Lake Hammock master plan with the standards specified in Exhibit A of the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Okay. Second, please.
Second.
Okay.
Motion and a second.
Could we just be clear on, this motion is to approve Smoskellman three, two thousand seventeen and ordinance number forty-two, two thousand seventeen.
Yes, sir. Is that?
Hold.
Hold, hold, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, next will need a motion to approve rezoning number four, two thousand seventeen and related ordinance number forty-three, two thousand seventeen.
Do I have that motion?
Move to approve the rezoning number four dash twenty-seventeen and the related ordinance number forty-three dash twenty-seventeen.
Do I have any? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Roll call.
Roll call. I cannot get that. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item. Forgot to put the thing on there. Which one are we on? Is ten A, first reading? Mr.'s?
Yes, that's ordinance. That's ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Six Buildings and Building Regulations, specifically amending Section six dash fifty-six Required Inspection Approval Prior to Use for Occupancy, six fifty-eight qualification for obtaining permits, and six sixty-eight inspections in building site to add requirements related to swimming pools, deleting Chapter eighteen Swimming Pools in its entirety as duplicative to requirements of the Florida Building Code and Land Development Regulations, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
The Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen Swimming Pools was created in nineteen sixty-three and subsequently amended in nineteen ninety to prohibit construction of a swimming pool by owner-builder. After review of the code, staff is recommending the chapter be deleted because technical zoning and permitting requirements found in this chapter are administered more appropriately in both the Florida Building Code and the Titusville Land Development Regulations. In addition, it's much, much of the language in the chapter is no longer consistent with the current adopted codes, department policies and fee schedules. In an effort to bring consistency to the current city operating, staff believes this chapter is in that, is anticipated, is antiquated, I'm sorry, and should be deleted entirely. Ms. Bisaka's here to answer any of your questions, and a reminder, this is a first reading.
Any comments, ma'am? Any questions from counsel? I don't see any. Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there is, this is a first reading, so we have no vote. But it's the next item, please. Mr. City Attorney?
Next item is ordinance number forty-eight, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-one Utilities, Article Four Water and Sewer Rates and Charges and Billing Procedure, specifically amending Section twenty-one, two forty-one, three F, Schedule of Water and Sewer Charges, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, An Effective Date, and Incorporation Into the Code.
The City Code of Ordinances, Chapter one Utilities, Article Four Water and Sewer Rates and Charges of Billing Procedures, Section twenty-one, two forty-one, three F, Schedule of Water and Sewer Charges currently allows water-cooled air-conditioning customers to supply their makeup water with separate irrigation water service and pay for all of the water that is used at the irrigation water rates. However, for water cooling tower customers served by irrigation water and connections to the city sewer, the Code of Ordinances currently does not compensate the city for the bleed water that is currently drained into the sewers as part of the standard cooling tower operations. Twenty percent of the makeup of the water is, is the industrial accepted standard for the bleed water drained into the sewer for water-cooled air-conditioning equipment. After review of the published national industry practices regarding water and sewer utility provisions for servicing and billing water-cooled air-conditioning customers, staff has determined that the following code amendment to compensate the city for industrial standard twenty percent bleed water that is drained into the city sewers. The City Code of Ordinances will reflect the, the ideal model for maximizing the service reliability, billing accountability, cross-connection, safety and efficiency in the delivery of city services. Accordingly, staff recommends amending the Code of Ordinances to compensate the city at an irrigation water rate plus twenty percent of the sewer rate associated with separation irrigation water services that supply water-cooled air-conditioning systems and where customers also connected to city sewers. Mr. Stauffer is here to answer any of your questions, and again, this is a first reading.
Mr. Stauffer, do you have any comments? Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Stauffer? Go ahead. Make a move.
Mr. Stauffer?
Go right ahead.
Can you explain it in very kindergarten English for us?
In this, in the city of Titusville, as well as throughout the country, there are, we have a handful of large facilities that use cooling towers to cool their buildings.
Okay, what is a cooling tower?
A cooling tower, in a, in a simple way, it is, it's a giant fan that you then allow water to cascade down blades and uses the evaporation to cool. So it's like a water-cooled air conditioner. So the hospital has cooling towers, very large facilities have cooling towers. So, so what we're proposing is currently we allow separate meters to supply the water to those towers. But what we don't do is we don't collect any sewer for the water that goes that's not all evaporated. And typically, about twenty percent of it is sent to the sewer. So what happens is after you recycle that water a number of times, it becomes very mineralized and very hard, and so then they have to dump a portion of it and replace it with fresh.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what's happening is those folks that have irrigation meters, they're not being charged for the, for the sewage that they're sending to us.
Okay.
So all we're doing is looking to rectify that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any, any other questions from counsel? I see none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
This also is a first reading, so go to the next item. Item C, Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances related to utilizing conservation subdivisions in the area of critical concern by amending Chapter thirty Development Standards, Section thirty dash two oh seven, area of critical concern performance to permit the development of conservation subdivisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission will consider this ordinance on sixth December two thousand seventeen. The area of critical concern was designated as a special zoning overlay district in September nineteen eighty-eight in order to require development that's consistent with the protection of the city's wells and aquifer recharge areas. Development standards within the area of critical concern are required to comply with several requirements, including a minimum, minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Intent of this limitation is to maximize recharge and permit reasonable use of the land. Water Resources Department supports residential developments utilizing the conservation subdivision standards as a way to minimize the alteration of topography, maximize recharge, and provide additional development options. Minimum percentage of open space required for conservation subdivision is fifty percent of the gross acreage of the development. And as a reminder, this is a first reading. Mr. Stauffer is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, if you can help me out, I think, but if you can guide me, Hopkins, is it? No, Garden, Garden Street, is this a, a challenge sometimes?
Yes.
So inherently on Hopkins where, I keep saying that, on Garden Street, and we've got some older buildings over there, how will that impact? If I come in on a, on a building where, number one, do we have construction that, do we have construction that's taken place on areas of critical concern from the past? If I come into rehab building, build new building, or so forth and so on, how might that impact that? Is that helpful?
This would not impact that. This is talking about creating new subdivisions.
Okay.
And right now, we require a minimum of ten thousand square feet, which is about a quarter acre. What we're saying is, if you can, you can have smaller lots if you preserve more of that recharge.
All right.
Mr. Stauffer probably can say that more eloquently.
So, and we've had a, a number of subdivisions come in, and so we've, we've looked at this, and what we see is this is an opportunity. And, and from what we found is, it seems like the, the market is now looking for smaller lots. But what we, you know, we did some analysis, and this ordinance ends up with a, there's actually a net benefit to the amount of impervious that we will end up with in conservation subdivisions. And so what we see is that if you limit the size of the lots, you limit the impact to the surrounding area, as well as, you know, you preserve natural topography, that's one of the things that's very important for recharge, as well as, you know, we would rather see these areas stay natural versus being large lots that are cleared, that could then, swimming pools could be built, there could be other structures that could be built there, fertilizing, manicuring the lawns. So it, so for the, for recharge in general, it's, it's more beneficial for us to have the, the smaller lot size, but, but retain whatever that, that difference between the, say, the eight thousand square foot lot and a ten thousand square foot lot, and then have that moved to conservation.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
No cards. First reading, so we'll go on to the next item. Is old business, there is none. New business, selection of vice mayor. Do you introduce that, or is that need introducing?
That's a yes, sir.
Pretty much. We will, I will accept nominations from counsel. And, oh, by the way, there's a methodology change, not change, but it's different than a regular vote. One person makes a nomination, it doesn't take a second. The next person, if they have a nomination, wants to make it, then they can make it, and then we vote. There can be three nominations, but we vote on it, each one separately.
I would continue. Oh, yes, sir.
Continue. Okay.
I would nominate Vice Mayor Behringer to remain Vice Mayor. Behringer.
Any, any other nominations? I hear none. Close the nominations. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Congratulations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. If I may?
Sure.
Number one, thank you for the privilege, and it really, it really is one of the, it really is a privilege, so I thank you for that, to be, to be able to serve our community or so, and also thank you for your confidence in, in that role. So thank you.
Okay. Next item is designation of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Community Redevelopment Agency by City Council. We can start out with the Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I would nominate Member Behringer.
Do I hear any other nominations? Close the nominations. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Congratulations on that. Next item is update council appointments to serve outside.
We gotta do the Chair.
Sorry?
We have to do. We have to nominate the Chair.
The Chair.
Oh, got that one. Okay, open the nominations for the Chair.
I would nominate Walt Johnson for Chair.
Any other nominations? I hear none. I'll close the nominations. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Now you can shake my hand. All right, now we go to the next one. If I can find it. Wait a second. Mr. City Manager, do you want to introduce this, or we're just taking?
No, sir. The purpose is to update council appointments. We do this annually. We're passing out a hard copy if you'd like to work off of that rather than your computer. And just as a reminder, the positions that are actually appointed to boards, the appointee is, if they are a voting member, liaisons to boards are not voting members.
Correct. Thank you, sir, pointing that out. So I'm gonna make a suggestion here that may make this very easy. We've all spent one, one year so far with these present things that we're on. Is there anybody that just has to make a change in what they're doing or what they're on, or we can just accept these as the ones for the next year?
I sort of feel like we spent the last year getting to know these people that are on these committees or commissions, and we're finally at a point where we can do some good. So I would like to keep it the same.
I feel the same way. Rest of counsel?
Yep.
Yes, yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, counsel. We don't need to- We don't need to vote on this in any way, right? It's done. Thank you.
I had one question.
Sure.
With the SEDC, is that as... As I think that that has... Is it dissolved, or is it...
We don't know the status, so what we would like to do is continue to provide a liaison to that once they figure out their direction.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item is petitions and requests from public present. Is there anybody with a petition or request? I see none. Mayor and counsel reports. You have my report, but I have to tell you, I did not make the last visioning meeting, so that's on there, but I didn't get to it. I have nothing. Manages report.
Mayor, if I could, I...
Yes?
I had a conversation with the clerk after the last meeting, and she, for minute-taking purposes and for continuity, if council members do have items they'd like to discuss as a group, she'd prefer that that happened under mayor and council reports if at all possible.
Oh, yes.
Instead of doing the city manager's report, city attorney report, and then having discussion from council members.
Okay.
It's easier for the minutes. I just want to clarify, if anyone has any discussions they'd like to bring up, it's appropriate to do it under mayor and council reports.
Okay, that's quite correct. I'll go back to that. Anything from any of the members?
I have to give a good news story.
Go ahead.
My principal wanted to make sure I got this in, so I'm going to do that. Part of it's not good news. I can't remember. I guess it was the night before Thanksgiving, I had administrative duty to basketball game. I was doing some extra work in my office. I came out of my office. I have a golf cart that we get around our 54 acres, and my golf cart was gone. And I just knew, custodian must have taken it. However, in the end, the custodian did not take it, and it was definitely on the MIA list. I went out to my truck, and I was going to drive around and see if I could find it, but as I was getting into my truck, one of my former students said, "Hey, coach, how you doing?" And I must have had that look on my face, because she then said, "Let me ask you a question." And I said, "Okay." She goes, "Are you missing a golf cart?" And I must have had that missing a golf cart look on my face. But anyway, I said, "Yes, I am." She said, "Well, we just passed it over there on Emerald Place." If you don't know where Emerald Place is, it's over there on DeLeon. So, I go flying over there, I'm going to find that golf cart. Did call the police, and I do want to thank the police for being there. Officer Holliday was there quickly, and at some point, I retreated realizing I wasn't going to find it, wasn't sure what I was getting into, and I got a call from her on my cellphone and said it's over here on WC Stafford, and that means that golf cart went a long way, because that's about another... Almost a mile down there. Officer Jackson. Long story short, as I talked to the police officer, I'm like, "How'd you guys ever find this thing?" The community had called in, four or five different community members had called in as it was going along the way. I found that to be very community-minded, and I was very impressed. And I don't know who all called. I will say, the guy who came out in the street when he said, "It's right here in front of my house," old city worker Dennis Pouncy, used to be a classmate of mine, and I just thought that was kind of a... I wish no one had taken my golf cart, but it was kind of a nice story, and I appreciated that help, and us all sticking together on that.
I think it's a great story, and we need more of that.
That was pretty cool.
It really is. That's a very good story. Thank you. Any other? Sir?
Yeah, so, and Member Diesel, if I was... And again, I don't know if I was a betting man, that probably has something to do with the juvenile doing something they weren't supposed to do.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not going to quit. I'll probably be screaming it till the day I die. Juvenile crime is still a problem. Our colleagues, our friends at JDC are still not helping to the needs of our community. As a most recent example, this is just two weeks old. Take the names out, put the actions in. Kid hits another kid with a lead pipe. He gets taken for charges and is sent back home. In the process of being home, commits another action that gets him arrested, of which JDC won't take him. They say, "Go back home." In that instance, I was hoping that by the time there was enough throughout the state of Florida that we had gotten a little further down the way, but it was an unfortunate reminder about how far we are with some of our youth, and that is unfortunate. I think that that has still continued to service. And again, I probably rather... I'm going to get through the holidays, and probably about February, I'm going to take another crack at that, because at the end, I can't stop having it put right in front of my face. Yeah, so.
So, I'm not sure I understand. Why did they release him?
They...
He does not score enough points. The detention risk assessment instrument requires that you have a certain amount of points before you can be held, and...
Because of age, or just generally?
Just generally. So, it's sort of a screwed-up system.
Sort of.
Sort of. Sort of a screwed-up system. So, for... If you're on probation, you get X amount of points. If you have... If it's a felony charge, you get so many points. You get so many points if it's more serious felony than a less serious felony. You get... It's crazy. And if you do not reach that magic number, you do not get detained. And the sad thing is, if you get detained, and they just say you can go home on home detention with electronic monitoring, the officers are not allowed to have access to that information. So, if a kid walks out the door and heads down to Ron Norris at 3:00 in the morning with an ankle monitor on, these guys don't know it, because the Department of Juvenile Justice will not share that information with them.
What's wrong with this picture?
Lot.
A lot. A lot is right. Anybody? Any other counsel reports? I see none. City managers report.
Yes, sir. Just some dates, upcoming events in our city. On the 8th of December, we'll have our annual tree lighting ceremony in front of City Hall, and followed the next day, on the 9th of December, will be our annual Christmas parade. On the 5th of December, the shoreline restoration workshop that counsel requested will be held here at 5:30 in council chambers, and subject to your question, that completes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. City Attorney, anything to report?
No, sir.
All right.